For Monday, November 3rd. We were in executive session previously after we entered from public session. The only thing I can say is that we approved several sets of minutes, but we have not approved them to be released, so there is nothing else to discuss with the executive session. Before I go into the pledge of allegiance, however, I'd like to recognize a sad passing, and I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Handler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, reluctantly, I would like to offer our condolences and our deepest sympathy to the Bonnet family, specifically Alice Bonnet, who was a former public safety dispatcher here for the Harwich Fire Department for a lot of years. She has lost her daughter, Laura Elizabeth Squires of Harwich, graduated in 1981 from Harwich High School. And I would just like to have you all join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of Laura Elizabeth Squires. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And the board sends its condolences to Alice and her family. All right, so I'd like you to stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, under staff announcements, Mr. Handler will be having...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to just mention to the public that I will be holding my own office hours on November 13th, 2025, here at Harwich Town Hall at 732 Main Street in the Select Board Library, which is in the middle level. From 8:30 a.m. to 9:15 a.m., all are welcome. Thank you.
All righty. And once again, we want to recognize that we have a Veterans Day ceremony happening at Evergreen Cemetery out in East Harwich. Beautiful location, especially after all the work that Robin has put in there. It'll begin at 10:30 a.m. on November 11th.
Mr. Chair, if I may add to that?
Yes, sir.
For the public who may want to go but may not want to traverse the entire property to get way out back from the parking area, there will be a golf cart provided, and that golf cart seats three additional people in addition to the driver. And that will help move people back and forth and get them where they need to be.
You driving?
I will not be driving, but it is my golf cart.[202.45][202.45](Laughter). Don't worry about the insurance, I got it.
All right, any other staff comments or announcements? Sure.
Hi, good evening.
Hello there.
Hello again. My name's Julie Groom. I'm the Director of the Council on Aging, and I just wanted to come make a couple of quick announcements. Primarily, this is in response to all of the news that has been widely publicized in the last week regarding the SNAP benefits freeze. It seems like things are changing on a day-to-day basis, so I'm not going to speak to exactly what the situation is right now, but there's certainly a lot of concern in the community. And we do understand that SNAP benefits have not gone out to Massachusetts residents for November as of yet. So I just wanted to be here to let the public know and let the Select Board know that the Council on Aging is responding to this. We have the support of our COA Board and of the Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging. So we've put together sort of a, I guess, a multi-pronged approach, and I just wanted to let folks know what that is. So the food programs that we have, some of them are always in existence, and some of them we've put together just in the last week or two. So we always have the Brown Bag Program, which is a monthly grocery delivery. There's, it's open to any Harwich resident who's 60 and up, or Harwich residents who meet certain income requirements. We deliver orders from the Family Pantry once a week on Tuesdays. They have allowed us to increase our capacity with them, so we'll be able to meet the demand of the community. We have set up van rides to other local food pantries in case someone would like to supplement with going to another source or just has a preference. We have increased our capacity for our lunch program for the month of November, and likely we'll extend that into December as well. And we've made the decision to offer that completely free of charge for everyone regardless of their circumstances, because it can be a tough time of year for everybody, even if they're not affected by what's going on in the wider community. Every year, we do give out baskets of food for Thanksgiving. It includes a frozen turkey, a very large amount of produce, some non-perishables that someone can use to make their Thanksgiving dinner. So again, this is open to anyone in Harwich who's age 60 and up. I believe other local agencies are distributing food to a wider bracket. So if you're looking for that, you can call our office and we'll point you in the right direction. We are taking names, phone numbers, addresses for the folks who are interested in receiving that Thanksgiving grocery delivery. We'll be delivering that the week before Thanksgiving, on that Thursday before Thanksgiving. Again, completely free of charge. There's no questions asked about your income or your family status. Just if you'd like to participate, give our office a call. That is delivered by volunteers from the community, so I'll just take this opportunity to say thank you to the many volunteers who come out and help us every holiday season. The Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging are also making a generous donation to us so that we can fund the purchase of some gift cards to local grocery stores for those who are not able to meet all of their needs through the local food pantry, like with dietary restrictions and that sort of thing. I'll be coming to you next week with the request to accept that donation, so I'll be back to see you then. And then, on a similar note, we do have our annual Thanksgiving luncheon coming up in November. We've actually expanded that to have two seedings this year because it's a very popular lunch, and we sell out like that. So on Thursday, November 13th, and Wednesday, November 19th, we will be serving a traditional turkey meal with all the fixings. We do ask that people sign up for that because we have a limited seating of 50 for each of those dates. Registration for that opens tomorrow morning, so if anyone would like to join us for Thanksgiving lunch, we hope you give us a call. On a similar note, since everyone is watching their pennies lately, I just wanted to put a plug in for an event that we have on Thursday, November 13th. National Grid and EverSource Customer Advocates will be coming out to the COA to meet with people one-on-one to talk about how they can lower their bill, let them know about programs that they might be eligible for to lower their rate, or to prevent themselves from having a shut-off in the winter. So that will happen from 10:00 to 12:30, again, on Thursday, November 13th. So basically, we're just here to say we don't want anyone in Harwich to be going hungry for any reason. If you're affected by the SNAP benefits cut, if you're just having a hard time, or if you just need some extra support, we hope you come out and talk to our office, give us a call, come in, we'd be happy to help you. If you are not over age 60, we can still point you in the right direction. So that's everything.
Julie, before you leave, just express the gratitude on behalf of the board for all the work that went into the food resiliency. Really appreciate that, and I'm sure the public will too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn.
Thank you. Carolyn Kier, the Community Center Director. On the same vein, I didn't know Julie was presenting tonight, I could have passed her my notes and asked her to do it. We were originally not having a spaghetti supper, or a pasta dinner, if you want to know what I really think, in November, but in light of the situation that is happening, we felt it was important to do that, so we have brought in some new resources, and we will be hosting our free pasta dinner on this Thursday, 5:30. It is free. Again, no questions asked, you don't even have to live in Harwich. If you need food help, come in. On another note, we have reached out to the pantry to see how we could be supportive. So we are going to be a site where people can drop off if you find yourself that you have extras or would like to give. We have a can drive, cereal, any, we have a whole list of what they're looking for, and you can even call if you don't want to get out of your car, and we have some volunteers who work with us. We'll run out and get it for you. You literally can drive by, we'll grab the food, bring it in, and get it to the pantry so it can get to the people in need. In addition, if you're looking for something to do, we still have a few clue tickets that are out and about. So if you need help finding them, just give me a call. I'm more than happy to send you in the right direction. Just a few things I wanted to mention, and I really wanted to thank everyone who came out on Sunday for our team clothing swap and the yard sale. They were a great success. So, trying to help in any way we can. Thank you.
Any other staff announcements? Okay, moving along. Weekly briefing.
So updates on sewer projects in Phase 3 on 1 East and West. Again, work continues on 1 East Route 39, Vicksburg, Bascom Hollow, and Williamsburg. Just a note, they won't be doing construction, obviously, on Thanksgiving Day or the day after, but they have asked to work on November 11th, so just be aware of that. On 2 West, same, they're working on Pleasant Bay Road still. And then, three weeks out, four weeks out, I just want to note they're going to start the pump station, the Pleasant Bay pump station at Pleasant Bay Road, so that pump station will be under construction, so that's in addition to the normal roadwork that'll be going on there as well. In terms of Great Sand Lake Sewer Extension, we did close on our bonds last week, we had our closing. Funds are in the bank, $10.185 million. Not all for that, but for a variety of different projects, so that went well. As far as the Brooks Academy Library, we did come to an agreement with the designer and architect firm. I hope to have that contract available for the board to sign on Monday. It just came back today, we just got to get it ready for the board's signature so we can get to work on the work under that particular contract. One thing I did want to ask the board as it relates to the Route 28 Dry Pipe Project, and perhaps a previous discussion the board had about this, and obviously, we're, we have that November 30th date, the construction bids are, it's out for bid, the bids may be coming in this month, the question is, will the award happen, you know, before November 30th? We, I think, prior to me arriving, the board took a vote for us to submit for next year as well for SRF. And I just wanted some clarity about, if we don't receive SRF funds, is the project still going forward? I was told the answer was yes, the board wanted to continue with the project regardless of that. I'm just curious if that is the case or not. Does anybody recall?
My recollection is that, yes, we move forward. I can't, I'd have to review the minutes of the tape.
Okay, I can find out, I just didn't know if anybody knew the answer, but not an immediate decision point, but it has come up at a couple of meetings.
There was a second level of discussion in that, I'm the representative for the Clean Waters Board of the county, amongst the things that happened, which I was going to mention on 3A also, that in addition to getting a good interest rate originally, which we certainly did on 3A.
We did.
It's 3.01 on average, as I recall. It's uncertain over at least the next year what's going to happen for the SRF funding because it appears largely it's depleted, not so much at the county level because they changed the amortization of that, now they pay out. The governor was looking to seek for an environmental ballot issue of about $350 million to fuel this, while we still want to do it, the question is whether or not there will be money there once we reapply to do it. And for everybody who's trying to remember what's, all the moving parts, in part, this is because we were trying to coordinate this with the paving project for Mass DOT where we would not have to remove the asphalt, nor would we be paving, we'd just be excavating and put water lines in, sewer lines, which was going to make it super economical. But, so on our side, we did want to do it to keep the savings, but the question then becomes, is there going to be money? So we're going to have to figure that out as we go along.
We have the authorization to cover, right now, the overall construction cost is just under $3 million, so we have the borrowing authorization internally to cover the whole thing, it's just, was a question that's come up in a couple meetings, not anything that needs a definitive answer right now, but...
Yeah, well, we definitely wanted to move forward.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense, I mean, it's, it would save the town a lot of money by doing it.
Right, which was the ultimate rationale to it.
Correct. Okay, thank you for that. That's it.
Mr. Chair. Any other questions for the town minister? Thank you. All right, public comments and announcements. I see a member of the public. How are you doing, Patrick?
Good evening, Board, and thank you. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. I did send everyone an email. I am in error, I didn't include Town Administrator, Mr. Skiavi, in that mess communication, but I just want to reiterate what I did send for the record, and that is concerning Item 11 X1, Contracts Number B, to review and approve a contract with National Well &amp; Sprinklers Inc. for irrigation upgrade at Cranberry Valley Golf Course in the amount of $1,744,500. I'm going to ask you not to go with this sum. Please consider the environment, and please consider the natural resources that we are dealing with in this town. There are many different options besides irrigation that are available for plantings. One question I have, what is the lifespan of this upgrade? Will it still be functional 15 years from now, 20 years from now? And what will be our environment, and what will be our natural resources? What will be our water sources in that duration of time when this is implemented, if it is implemented? So please try to think forward, not just today, but think about the future, think about our environment, the environmental impact of using that water, and begin changing our focus and direction into more sustainable existence rather than that perfect, pure golf course that everyone's used to. So I appreciate your time and listening. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Anyone else? Want to double back just a second, Tony, to you and your report. I got an email today, and it's particular to one person, but it brings up a broader issue. How would someone track any questions that they might have relative this 3A? Because there were a lot of questions, like where, who's being sewed, and how. In his particular circumstance, he had been identified as a gravity feed, and he knows that he's not going to be, that it would actually be a pump feed for him. But how would anybody know that? Who would they go to to ask those types of questions while this is being designed?
So I guess, well, related to pump versus gravity, how did he come to that determination?
I do not know. I'm bringing up the broader things, like he sent me an email as if I were going to go out and hook him up.
Yeah, I mean, typically, that comes from an engineer. I mean, I'll just use my own situation, I'm 300 feet from the street, and I'm thinking, you know, with the pitch you need, I'd be in China by the time they reach, you know, Route 39, and I'm on gravity, because the pipe happens to be down at like 18 feet in the street, so. Most of that's determined by the engineers when they do that. I think if it's a one-off, if it's an individual thing, if they just sent it to our office and we can track down the answer, we would probably end up going to either the engineer that we have, most likely to address a particular residence issue related to that, because some of it's technical, obviously, as it relates to, you know, gravity versus, you know, a pump system, you know.
Yeah, and we're in that middle period beyond which we authorized everything, we made the borrowing, we don't have a construction contract yet, so we're kind of in that, who's it going to affect and how?
Yeah, I mean, I think our, I think our Phase 3A map, I think identifies all the streets, and because we know how many houses are being sewed, so that map should be up on, if somebody just had a question about, am I getting it or am I not getting it, that information is available, but if they can't find it, we can obviously, and we're populating the website as new information comes up, we're putting it up on the website for the different phases and different information that's available, so.
Okay.
But for one-offs, I think if they just start with us, we can get them in the right, since we're kind of managing that.
If I may, on page 98 of our packet, it has the color code, who's getting the gravity and who's getting pumps and things like that.
Yeah, I'm talking about who should they go to as a person to ask a question if they have a question. That's a good answer. Okay, that's all I really wanted to know, because a lot of people, a lot of times, people are frustrated because they can't go someplace to actually ask a question.
Right.
All right, so, moving on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Select Board meeting minutes from October 27th, 2025.
As written.
As written. Second, with, second with a quick correction, if I may. On page 21 of the packet, which is page 6 of the minutes, it states, Mr. Pikarski moved that the Port Restaurant serve their liquor license suspension on June 26, July 24, August 21, seconded by Mr. Howell. The vote was 2-3-0 with Ms. Dusset and Mr. Howell voting yes. I believe...
It was Pete and I.
It was Select Board Member Pikarski and the Chair voting...
Yes.
...with aye.
Yes, you're correct.
Thank you.
So with that correction...
That was the only one I found.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to offer a correction under the call to order in open session. It indicates that I was present with a 5-0 vote, and I was not present at 5:15.
Okay, so that'll be changed, and so the public understands, when they see the executive session minutes that get released, they will find you there, but you did not show here because there was some conflict in the original early part of the executive session, and so you're correct. You weren't here to convene the open session, but so folks aren't mystified that you are going to be showing up in the minutes of the executive session, and then later on in the full session.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, with that, those two changes, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose, it's unanimous. Okay. Moving along to the annual meeting update.
So just in our tracking our milestones, we're in the red for getting our free cash certified, we'd hope to get it by the end of October. We did find out today, our finance team meeting this afternoon, that they, DOR hopes to review our file this week. So if we're lucky enough where they don't have any major questions, you know, should be, it should be imminent, so we're tracking that, we're basically at their, you know, their discretion in terms of when they, when they give us that back, so we're just holding on that. The next major item will be Monday, November 10th, we're planning and presenting to the board. We've asked the finance, or invited the Finance Committee, if they wish to sit in, to get a detailed presentation on the prior year financial review on how we did in 2025. So we'll have that PowerPoint presentation for Monday, and Jennifer Mintz will be presenting that along with myself at Monday's meeting. So that's something new, it's never been done before, but I think it's important that, you know, we close out a year, we probably ought to talk about it and see how we did. Where were some points of interest along the way, and when we closed the budget out in terms of, you know, revenue that came in higher than estimated, expenses coming in lower than budgeted, and a bunch of other information in terms of the makeup of the different financial aspects that occurred throughout the fiscal year of '25. So hopefully you'll like it. I think it's a really great presentation for the board, Finance Committee, and the community to get a more detailed view of our financials for the prior fiscal year. That informs us of how we get ourselves prepared for the next fiscal year, which we're in that budget process now, so. Other than that, everything else is in work and still on time?
And by our time, it's ahead of time for...
It is ahead of time, yes. It's ahead of your prior time, well ahead of your prior time.
Questions, comments, the Town Minister?
Good evening.
Okay, so we'll look forward to changing the yellow into green.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to move on then. I am going to be recusing myself for this next item, it's a little complicated, but Andrew knows what I'm going to say. I was deeply involved in the negotiation for the sale of the property that resulted in both Hesh and a private party getting a hold of it, but in so doing, I was also involved in a comprehensive permit, of which this is one of the requirements to create an external requirement for historic preservation. So that's my reveal for recusing myself.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, folks, we'll take up Item A, which is the review and approval of the historic preservation restriction at 97 Route 28 between J. and S. Cape House LLC and the Town of Harwich. And please, if you'd like to introduce yourself and make a statement?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, an attorney in Dennisport, here on behalf of the applicant. As Mr. Howell noted, the property at 97 Main Street, Route 28, was part of the comprehensive permit that was approved in 2017, where Habitat built six houses in the back on this property, and the two existing houses on the front are the market rate units. One of the conditions of the Habitat comprehensive permit was that the Judah Eldredge Chase House on 97 Route 28, which is Lot 7 on the subdivision plan, be placed under a conservation restrict, I'm sorry, historic preservation restriction. Due to several reasons between, things that have happened between 2017 and today, it took until tonight that I can be before you with a historic preservation agreement document, excuse me, restriction document, that has been approved by the state, has been signed by the applicant, has been now signed by the Harwich Historic District and Historical Commission, and the last local stop that it needs to be signed is you all. Once, if you approve it and sign it, then I get the whole package up to the state, the secretary up at the Mass Historical Commission would then countersign, and I can record it at the Registry of Deeds, and the exterior of the house will then be preserved. The original part of the house is an 1850 Greek Revival, it had some additions in the later 19th century, it's had some other additions, the entire structure is what is being placed under the historic preservation restriction. And so we presented to you a copy of the document that you have before you for signature. I will now, given, the way I set it up, it's pages 19 to 21, I'm going to have to change page 19 because the original, or I should probably change page 19 if you approve it, the original page where it starts off with, you're accept, we, the board, Select Board hereby accept, I have Mr. Howell's name on that page, so it's probably better to have a signature on that page, and then the other pages can just be the individual members. It needs a majority vote, and so if we're here asking your approval of the restriction, and if you approve it, Mr. Skiavi, what I suggest is I could then revise that page and then just submit, you know, revised pages to you. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, for the board, thank you for that explanation. For the board's certification, Attorney Lee Smith from KP Law opined and stated as requested, he's reviewed, he has reviewed the preservation restriction on the house located at 97 Main Street, as well as the comprehensive permit decision as amended. In his opinion, the restriction meets the requirements of the comprehensive permit decision as amended, and is in the form generally acceptable by the Mass, Massachusetts Historical Commission, and as such, if we approve this tonight and sign it, then, as Attorney Singer said, it will be forwarded to the Massachusetts Historical Commission for their final signature. So by all accounts, with KP Law, Town Council, everything is in order. So with that said, any questions?
Mr. Chair?
We have a question from...
I have no questions. A question from Mr. Kelleher.
I'm sorry.
Andrew, is that the White House on Route 28 that is all shored up right now?
Yes, it is.
And so in the end, this is just going to be preserved as, as an original house? I mean, it's just going to be fixed up and made structurally sound?
Well, it's going to be fixed up and made structurally sound, the shoring up is for, I think, the porch.
Yes.
Is the issue that needs the most attention at the moment. But yes, the historic preservation restriction will preserve and limits what you can do to the exterior of the structure, certain things, and it's a 20-page document, certain things are allowed by right maintenance, certain things would require permission from the Harwich Historic Commission if you were trying to make a bigger change, and the state. But yes, the goal of this is to, once it's fixed up, is that that exterior remains protected.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a historic preservation restriction at 97 Route 28 between J. and S. Cape Houses LLC... between J and S Cape Houses LLC and the Town of Harwich as presented in tonight's package.
Second. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Most unanimous.
Thank you very much.
So you're gonna present a new, updated document?
I think just on one page, I think what I'll do is I'll put Mr. Pykarski's name on that page 19. So I mean frankly.
The others, we can sign.
The other sheets, yeah, the other three of you could sign tonight. I just have to get you a revised one.
Perfect.
And if you are going to sign them tonight and want to sign them tonight, unless you are, I'm a notary. If you want me to be notarizing it otherwise, if you have your own process for that.
Yeah, we do.
Great, okay. I will submit that to you tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
You guys wanna withdraw?
Yours.
Yeah.
See if I can wake him up out there.
Okay. I'm not sure. The next item is on here, but I'm not sure how deeply we're gonna get into it. At one point or another, we were told that we could not have a discussion with anybody until the RFP responses were in. They are in.
They're in.
So are we good to go to schedule interviews with these people then to get in?
Yes.
Into detail about their own pitch?
Yes.
Because I think that was the question, we were told, can't have anybody here, can't have a discussion at all.
Right. So if I could, Mr. Chair, at the same time, I, well, I'd like to revisit a suggestion I made a while back to the board, which was to do an internal audit assessment of, of what our current vendor has been providing us so that at least this board is on the same page with respect to what has worked, what hasn't worked. I commend Mr. Skiavi for putting forth the, the request form that, that had come through a couple of weeks ago. But, you know, I, I would be going, at least for me, speak for myself, I'd be going into this process not understanding how this board feels and thinks and about what our current vendor is providing and where we can make improvements, both vendor-facing and town-facing for that matter. Does the town engage with council too much? I mean, obviously the intention would be to try to bring down the cost of, of our annual legal fees. But as I stated several weeks ago, I've gone through all of council's invoices that they've sent us and I have broken them up into categories. And it's, it was pretty eye-opening, to be honest with you, where you'd think that maybe administration is engaging a lot with council. Might not be the case.
So. It's a large mustache.
It's a large amount, but you know, regulatory and legal issues, there's a lot to be uncovered. I'm happy to share what I've done with the board. But I think at the same time, we're reviewing or bringing vendors in for what they can provide to us, I think we should be discussing what we're looking for.
And I'd be happy to do that, but I'd look at this as bigger than that. It's like, I'd love them to pitch, you don't know what you don't know when you don't know it. So I'd love them to pitch what they're capable of doing as well as having that discussion. Because I, I'm just gonna be blunt because I said it to them directly too. One of the things that you're not gonna see in these invoices is it was daunting to me that you could get two, sometimes three serial different opinions from the same law firm on the same subject that weren't the same conclusions, but we're getting billed for all of them. So somewhere along the line, they've got to have some sort of internal check where this is the decision that we're making and we all agree on that because it doesn't appear that they all talk sometimes. And this isn't gonna be news to them. Because I've actually said this to both Amy and Michelle, that one of the things that they need to work on in the future is redundancy. But having that conversation that you want to have would go hand in hand with us because it's both what we want and what they're capable of offering, which we won't know until we hear from the alternative pitches, you know, what, what might be different from what we're getting. And I'm not precluding, and by the way, the public should know, we're not gonna go without law services for the time being because we already have one of these three respondents working for us and they have been for a number of years. So it's not, it's not gonna be that we're gonna be bereft of legal representation for the time being. There's no real tremendous rush to do this, you know, ward something next week. So whatever discussions we want to have, fine with me.
And I like your point, Mr. Chair, about making this a broader, bigger discussion because I can, I can attest that there, there had been some times where different board members would call legal and it would turn into a bit of a mess. So with, with the information that they would give back to us. So at, at the end of the day.
And in some cases, that isn't the board members that were at fault because if they were talking to different lawyers, they oftentimes would get different conclusions, which is mystifying them, but it still costs us money. I mean, that's, that's the biggest deal that I have is not only are they conflicting opinions, but they're conflicting opinions that we're paying them to give.
Yes.
And that's not a secret.
No, and that's, that's certainly one way to look at it. And I would, I look forward to the discussion at the, at the board level here.
So again, my thought is we'll invite them in and that's part one of what we want to do. Is everybody in agreement with, with that, that they come in for a pitch?
I have no problem with that, I thought you were gonna say something?
Well, I didn't want to interrupt, no. I, I think, because I've, I've done this process before. So the board has time, right? If, depending on, on how you want to approach this. So I put one of these together when I was a town administrator born in, I think, May of 2020. I left and retired in September and they hadn't even, they hadn't done it yet. They did it in the fall after I left. So I provided the board, I don't know if you want to, for the public, want me to give you an overview of who responded? I can do that too for the public, but.
Very, okay with that.
Sure.
Sure.
So we put our RFP out there just for every, so everybody knows it's not, you know, legal services is not covered under procurement law. We chose to use the process, a similar process, just in terms of gathering all that information. So we're not under the, you know, similar type constraints as you would be if you're bidding out a project or, or whatever. We've been out for three categories, general municipal law, labor and employment law and land use and regulatory planning, which are kind of the, really the three big, you know, big rocks. Certainly a lot of, a lot of eggs go into the municipal law basket, but the other ones are a little bit specialized in terms of the type of legal services for labor and employment law and regulatory and land use planning. We put that out there, we received three responders. So Clifford and Kenny Law Firm put in a proposal for what I'll call category B, which is labor and employment law, that's their specialty versus, you know, town council type stuff for land use. KP Law, who we're all familiar with, put in for all three of those of the categories. And then Harrington Heat Law Firm also put in for all three categories. So we have three respondents. We have copies of those proposals that I gave, you know, we gave to the board tonight. My recommendation is you take some time, go through those because it's not only what services, but we ask for them to, you know, know what their fee structure was, any, you know, unique things that they may propose as it relates to that as we're looking at ways to reduce our, our legal fees overall, which generally I think most communities look at. When I looked at the town's budget, I think we budgeted, I think, $203,000, I believe, back in 2023. What I've seen is, you know, 250, right? So we're not, it's a lot of money, but it's not excessive from what I've seen in, in terms of other, the other communities that I, that I work. And when you get above that, certainly above 250, I think you need to start paying some attention of what's driving that. You know, if you have lawsuits and stuff like that, that's a whole separate, you know, thing that can drive that. But we, I don't think have had to deal with that, that I'm aware of. So a lot of it is just the normal, you know, day-to-day stuff that we rely on legal counsel for. I would suggest that what we do today in municipal law, particularly employment and other things, there's a lot of legal aspects to it that I think it's good for us to, to get legal advice on as long as it's controlled and we put some controls in that to make sure we're making the best decisions that we can and don't put our foot in, in a, you know, step in a pile of mud or something and then, you know, we cause more problems. So my recommend, it takes some time to review those and then, as the chair said, we can then schedule. We're getting into the holiday seasons coming up, we're getting a lot going on. Certainly will, we can schedule those at any point, but those are at least a few thoughts to perhaps consider when, when you move forward and, and how, so.
That's pretty much what I was saying, is that there's no real rush that we hire somebody next week because we're not, not covered. But I would love everybody to do a deep dive into this and there are a lot of moving parts, there just are. Who gets to get access, how they get it, what kind of opinions we're getting, all those things. Pete?
Totally agree with that and, yeah, I'm not looking to rush this thing through, but I, I would love if Mr. Handler has compiled some information, I'd love to get a copy of it.
Small fee.
Absolutely, yeah.
How about a big U, like as in us?
I have it here tonight and I'll give it to the board members tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everybody?
Good.
Some of these things, as I've said in the past, don't actually have a, a middle or an endpoint. They're just being brought up because we're gonna be continuing to have conversations about them. All right, so. License agreement with Bob Miller, Miller Golf Coaching for the Golf Instructional Services.
Will we figure it? Mr. Chair, I move we vote to approve a license agreement with Bob Miller, Miller Golf Coaching for Golf Instruction Services.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Mr. Chair, I will, if, if no other board member has any discussion regarding the actual contract itself, I think it would be important for the superintendent of the golf course, who I spoke with today regarding Mr. Patrick Otten's email. Now that that's a public document, I wanted to give the superintendent an opportunity to, to rebut, if I may.
Not on this, the next item.
Oh, sorry, wrong item. I see golf and I go right to the first tee. My apologies.
I knew where you're heading.
Yes.
It's just you got there a little sooner than the rest of us.
The whole route, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank you for that. So I'll second it and I'll, I'll hold my tongue.
And hold the thought for the very next motion.
Very much.
Okay.
I'm on the second tee now.
Okay, so the, this is for the Bob Miller.
So my only question is, I assume this agreement mirrors what is currently in place?
With Bob Miller?
For the most part.
Yes, this is, I think, his fifth iteration? Yeah, he's extremely well respected in what he offers. I mean, the golf superintendent can't say enough nice things about that program and I think it's one of the main draws to Cranberry Valley for the, what he provides.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded then to approve the contract for Miller Golf Coaching. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you oppose? Now make the motion, then we can have the discussion that we, I can cut and paste it onto this.
Thank you very much. I move that we approve a contract with National Lawn Sprinklers, Inc. for an irrigation upgrade at Cranberry Valley Golf Course in the amount of $1,744,500. No sense.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
I have a discussion, Mr. Chair, if that doesn't shock you.
I had a premonition that there might be one.
Did you have an idea about that? Well, look, like, like I said, I, you know, Mr. Otten, I, I understand where he's coming from, I always do. I respect his position every time he speaks, for, for, for sure, 100%. But I also think now that this is a public document, as I stated earlier at an inopportune moment, I, I did reach out to the, to the superintendent of the golf course just to get the other side of the, of the, of the story. And I, I also would like to remind the public that Cranberry Valley is a gem of a golf course. It is known nationally as one of the best public golf courses in the country. I will also remind the public that Cranberry Valley is a significant contributor to our local receipts. And that helps keeps our, keep our taxes under control, for lack of a better way to put it. If we lose quality of this asset by not irrigating, the downstream effects, in my opinion, are catastrophic to the Town of Harwich. We would lose, you know, there's 44,000 rounds played at this golf course annually, 44,000 rounds. And it looks like there's 100 rounds, it looks like a private golf course. The superintendent, the staff, Roman, everyone over there does one heck of a job doing the work to keep that golf course in the shape that draws people from all over the country to come and spend their money here in Harwich, not just at Cranberry Valley. So after receiving the email, I called the superintendent. Here are my takeaways and I wanted to share that perspective. Cranberry Valley follows the Department of Environmental Protection Regulations Regarding Water Usage and Specific Mandates. To Mr. Otten's question or, or suggestion to educate the golf course on water conservation and land management practices, I think Cranberry Valley does a fantastic job of that. The superintendent also made it very clear that Cranberry Valley follows all the rules that the Department of Environmental Protection sets forth to the letter and to the gallon. I thought that was a good point. Cranberry Valley has a water usage management plan in place on top of the Department of Environmental Protection Regulations and strictly adheres to that plan on a daily basis. During drought conditions, Cranberry Valley responsibly waters only the tee boxes, fairways and greens, leaving the rough and the rest of the course to Mother Nature. And a quote from, from the superintendent. "Upgrading the irrigation system will enable us to manage water usage more effectively and control the amount of water required during irrigation." As the superintendent put it, "It will allow me and my staff to put the water exactly where we need it and more importantly, not water where we don't. An upgraded system will be more efficient, more reliable, more energy conscious and much more cost effective." So to Mr. Otten's points, you know, I, I see them to be mildly counterfactual and counterproductive to the ultimate goal of saving our single source aquifer. And I'm gonna lean and rely on the experts with this one. So thank you for that, Mr. Chair. And just a side note, I don't think you'll find anywhere more educated group of professionals regarding water management practice and land management practice and land use management practice than the, the folks that we have over at Cranberry Valley. So yeah, I, I think that, that, that needed to be said. And I appreciate the time to do it. Thank you.
Sure. Something a little shorter, I was thinking myself to.
To get going.
Give unto Caesar what is Caesar's. I mean, I get where Patrick is going. We have done an awful lot of work in this town over the last 10 years to do preservation of open space, including rewilding bogs in cooperation with HCT. I'm pretty proud of our record of conservation of those things. But you're, you're running a golf course and at some point in time, you're competing with other golf courses that are next door. And if you let it run down to the point where it's unplayable, he, he's fighting against the entire construct of golf if the green is gonna be called the brown. It's, it's, it's not competitive with other places that are doing similar things. And I know through the years that we've had this discussion about low moisture fertilizers and strains of grass. I mean, Sean Fernandez is regarded as one of the experts, the experts on golf course management, particularly on his ability to, to keep a golf course in pristine shape. So we have to remain competitive. And by the way, the final thing that no one has mentioned is when we borrow money for this, it's coming off of the use of the golf course. Those subscriptions that we sell go into the fund that can't by itself in any given year buy a whole project, but it pays for the borrowing every year, so we're not doing that. So it's, it's very revenue neutral. And again, we're running a business and this has to do with it's up to keep.
What are the comments?
You're all very kind. I'd, I'd like to, it's thanks to me that we're back here having this conversation. So you're welcome.
Thank you.
And I'd like to apologize publicly to Mr. Skiavi because I didn't see the language within the agreement that was before us last week. But I appreciate the town administrator and the staff taking a look and finding it. And again, I, I apologize because we wouldn't be having this lengthy discussion and you folks did a much nicer job than I would have responding to the email.
Okay, and for those people who are thinking obliquely about this, it had a lot to do with what our rights were under a contract should we get to the point where something bad happened. And happy to say that we're actually looking towards that now that we, that we haven't been in the past. So yes, we did look into it and we do have that right. So that's it?
Yeah, that's it for me.
All right, so the contract is being proposed for $1,744,500. All right, so the contract is being proposed for $1,744,500, and I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Town administrator's report.
Let's see. Have a lot. Did you want me to cover that thing from last Friday?
Yeah.
With Rick? Okay. So it just, it just by, by happenstance, so if you recall, the board had asked me to go ahead and start to recruit for the assistant town administrator. So we were preparing all those documents. On Friday afternoon, I just happened to have a conversation with our consultant doing the TA search, and let him know that we were, you know, proceeding with that recruitment in hopes that whether we knew somebody or whatever that may be, you know, interested in the job. And he respectfully asked that we, that the board perhaps reconsider that decision. I think as he is putting together, and they're getting ready to, the, the search committee's getting ready to meet on, on Monday, the 10th, he feels he has a, an outstanding group of potential candidates for the, for the board. You know, I'll call them top draft choices. He used the different words, but, but he said to a T, those folks that he sort of puts at the, the top as he sees them, to the, to a T, everyone asked about whether they would have the ability to sort of recruit their second-in-command, if you will, or their second, their right-hand person. And it was important, it was important to them, you know, to do that. And I think when we were going through this, you know, process and deciding which direction to go, you know, I brought up some of the pros and cons and, and, you know, also in terms of, you know, the majority of the time you come in, your team's set. Sometimes you come in and you actually have the ability to, you know, put your team together yourself. And I think, you know, with that feedback, certainly it, it sounds like that's a really big selling point with some of the, some of the folks that, that Rick considered to be sort of, you know, at the top of the, of the list there. And I think, you know, as we probably already know, those candidates, and there's a good number of them, are probably watching our meetings, right? They're looking to see, you know, are we holding true to what we wanted to do in terms of working on, you know, culture and morale and, you know, collaborative relationship between the administrator's office and the board and other things. We're actually, we're doing all that stuff, which is all very positive. This was just another aspect of the recruitment that I think, from, from his standpoint, is a, is a big selling point for whoever the board ultimately decides to offer the position to and, and put a contract together, that being able to potentially recruit their second is a, is a big selling point for some of these, I'll call them top-tier candidates. So I just wanted to let the, you know, let the board know that, and, you know, I know it's not on the agenda, so I don't know to what level the board can discuss it if it wants to in the, in the future, or just, you know, stay the course. So I felt I needed to, to share that conversation, just because it came to me and, you know, on Friday, and, and have that, so.
It isn't on the agenda. I'd like to have it on the agenda next week, and I have to say that in talking to some of our friends who are TAs, and yes, I do have some friends who are administrators, that that's the sentiment I got, and I'm not sure, I would like you to be prepared to talk about what your timeline would be if you went ahead and recruited now and what value you would see, and then also be prepared to have a conversation about what Rick thinks that he's going to be able to bring forward candidates.
So I have some of that?
Yeah, I don't want to get too much more deeply into this. It's not an agenda item.
Sure.
So if that's okay, that's what I'm going to have brought back, is just what, what's going into this, what value we'd get if we continue to go forward, and, and when Rick would be thinking that his timeline is. There's no real rush for tonight, other, other than just bringing it up. Okay? All right, so.
Agenda item.
All right. So that's it for town administrator's report?
Yes.
All right, select board member reports.
Nothing this evening.
You got to get out more. You just do.
I prefer not to.
All the signs are picked up.
They're blowing up back on 124 in Queen Anne.
Yeah, there you go. Anita?
I have nothing to report.
Mark?
Yeah, the head of the zoning board of appeals wanted me to tell the public that the final public meeting for Pine Oaks 4 will be on November 17th, and that will be the last day to make public comment. And again, as I mentioned last week, ZBA needs new committee members, as well as the Energy and Climate Committee. So thank you.
Hell of a recruitment statement, it's all sorts of work, and we need you to volunteer. Is that pretty much what you're... Okay, Jeff?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair, and thank you. The middle school siding project.
Yes.
I, I read or heard that they may be coming in at about $2 million under. The project...
Pay for the roof.
Hey, you know? So I'm, I'm wondering if we could reach out and have the committee come in and give us an update on anything that, I mean, that, that's a significant amount of money, and I'd like to know if that's in fact accurate.
Ed, would, would that be possible?
Oh. Didn't even see you over there. Yeah, so that would be great, if we could have just a, a quick update on, on how things are going over there, timeline and cost.
Okay. Yeah, I had to reschedule my meeting with the school, so it's actually taking place this Friday.
Excellent.
And it's all about capital and projects, and that's one of them.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
You'll be, you'll be getting invitation in the mail. I have a strong feeling. Okay, thank you. And I don't have anything, so with that...
Hope you're new adjourned. Second.
Okay, just note, note the time.